All right, we have 6:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that's not on the agenda tonight, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close public comments. We'll move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, Maggie, that'll take us right into 61A AV upgrades.
Okay, so this is Mayor and Council. One second. All right, in front of you, we're just opening this up for discussion again for audiovisual updates in the city council chambers. So council's being asked to discuss and potentially approve spending $7,600, or $7,069.48 on CARES Act funds for audiovisual upgrades in the council chambers. So as you know, earlier in the year, we did work with Tierney Brothers to make several upgrades to our audiovisual. And then in March, COVID hit, and the council's been discussing doing further upgrades at this time. The upgrades that we're talking about, or and have talked about is live video conferencing capabilities that the public can view at home and get involved that way. It also allows the ability to download videos directly to our city YouTube channel. And then it would also allow the city of Mayor to broadcast the city council meetings and other meetings that we want to broadcast to residents that have MetroNet or Jaguar Communications as their provider. And I believe that's where we left it last time, was if that was a capability. So with that, council's being asked to consider that proposal.
And this would be paid for under the CARES Act?
Yes.
Tierney will install it, install it all?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions or clarification?
If not, I'll look for a motion to upgrade the City Hall AV in the amount of $7,069.48 for the council chambers funded by the CARE, the COVID CARES Act.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
So are there any foreseen charges going forward after this initial is spent? Like, are we gonna have to pay for the TV station, or?
Not above and beyond what we're gonna be paying. So it is included with our contract that we're working on with them. And then our YouTube channel, we already have established, so.
And then, will he do any training so that staff can get them uploaded right away?
Yes, yep, that was part of our discussion, was training initially to get us to be able to do that.
What's his timeline?
They wanna do, I know that they have a lot of orders in right now because of CARES Act, but they've, even after the last meeting, they reached out and wondering what the status was. So I think they can get out here pretty quickly.
That kind of rolls into some of my concerns. You know, when we upgraded before, we did have a lot of conversation of, let's, you know, get it on a timely manner. That hasn't happened, it's sometimes weeks before they get uploaded. Some of the other meetings, park board, EDA, getting all those recorded for the residents. We haven't done any of that, so I'm concerned. I can't suppo, I understand this is CARES money, and I get that, but it's still money. And to upgrade to not have these things, you know, happening for the residents, I just don't, it's hard to support it. So somewhere, I think we need to get some sort of policy set or something, if we're gonna do this, that meetings will be uploaded within 24 hours, or whatever it is, 48, whatever that can be. I think we need to do some of that and start getting all the other meetings recorded that we can to have them out for the residents.
I thought we were recording all the other meetings.
As far as I know, I haven't seen any uploaded, for the recorded, they're not uploaded anywhere.
We haven't been right now, we haven't had any planning.
I know I haven't seen them uploaded, but I thought we've been recording them at least.
We were, I was waiting for this to get upgraded. That, that's an error on my part. So I was waiting for me to be able to do it directly, just because.
But that's doing a disservice to our residents.
No, I, yep, I understand.
For me, like I said, it's hard to support, but I certainly support, I think this is the way to go. I'm in favor of this, but I need some kind of commitment that we can work on some sort of policy and get something set that we can get this stuff out for people. It's for council members who miss meetings, or residents, or the newspaper and press. It's nice for them to be able to watch it and be able to report on it. So if we have that commitment, then I'm, then I'm good with that. And if this will get us there, I'm okay with that, so that's my only comments.
Would we have the ability to go live, like, real time?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, 61B, awarding the sale for $118,000 GO equipment certificate.
Yeah, I can start. So tonight, as you know, in August, the council approved financing the fire department tanker in the amount of $118,000. And so what we did was, we worked with our financial advisor at Ellers, and we do have Chris Mickelson here tonight. Todd was not able to be here this evening to put that certificate together and then to get it out to local banks for bid. So what we wanted was, we wanted to see what interest, at what interest rates we could finance that project at, or that bond at. And so I can actually let Chris go into a little bit more detail. It did, we did get the bids and proposals back last Friday at 2:00. And in front of you, I don't have it on our, up there, but I did have some printouts that are available that show the, what the rates came in at. And it actually did go to our, one of our local banks, Core Trust, in the amount of 1.25%. The highest was 2.71%. And so council is being asked to approve the bid from Core Trust Bank at that 1.250%. I do have the resolution that would allow us to move forward. We would have to enter in that information, but it, there were some changes, and I'll let Chris go through that, because the cost of issuance came in lower than expected. And so the, it actually was reduced from 118 to 114.
If you want to take, take the podium, that'd be great, yep. Is the microphone on, Chanel?
Thank you for that, Maggie, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Chris Mickelson from Ellers and Associates. We assisted the city with the sale of what was originally 118,000 GO equipment certificates, became 114,000 because, as Maggie pointed out, the issuance costs came in a little bit below where we had anticipated. And so the bond amount was able to be reduced as a result of that. And so the sale day report, which I believe you all have in front of you, I'll kind of touch on the key points here. And then, any questions that you all have, I'm happy to, happy to address those. So again, as Maggie had said, six bids were received for the, for the sale of the GO equipment certificates for the city. The low bid was Core Trust Bank here in Mayor, Minnesota. And that, that was a 1.25% interest rate, which is a, you know, a truly fantastic rate to be achieved. And it just speaks to the creditworthiness of the city, but also the, you know, where interest rates have, have gone recently. It's, it's made my job very easy to go to cities and, you know, for the financings to say, you know, 1%, 1.5%, it, so a few years ago, when I was in front of you, I think the interest rate that we were discussing at that time was maybe 3 or so percent. And so needless to say, it's, it's been enjoyable to see just how competitive the bank bids have gotten in the last few years. But, so again, the principal amount was reduced from that 118 down to 114,000 at that 1.25%. The cost of issuance down to 10,125. And then the yield, that's what the end investor will earn on the investment, that's the 1.25%. Sometimes a premium bid will be placed. In this case, there was, there was no premium, because with local banks, the, the yield ends up being the same as the, as the interest rate. I won't get into the bond math on that, but anyway, it's a, a simple bid in this, in this case. And so that total net PNI, $118,775. This bond issue is callable basically immediately. And so if, and, you know, we don't expect this to happen, but if interest rates were to even come down lower between now and, say, a couple of years from now, the city could refinance with a new bond issue to take out this existing issue. But again, given that 1.25% rate, it's probably not likely for that to occur. And that asterisk there, subsequent to bid opening, this issue size was decreased to that 114,000 par amount. Closing gate, that's the date that the city will receive funds from this transaction, that is October 1st, 2020. And as, as Maggie said, the formal action in front of you this evening is to adopt the resolution awarding the sale of 114,000 GO equipment certificates to Core Trust Bank here in Mayor. Couple of attachments to this, the bid tab is first, and that lays out the six bids that were received. Again, Core Trust being the best bid, Northview, First State Bank, Woodlands Security Bank, and Bremer being the high bid, and ranging from 1.25% to that 2.71%. The page prior to that shows that the interest difference is just shy of 6,000 between those two, you know, best bid and the high bid. And then, sources and uses follows that. And the final debt service schedule follows that. So the, you know, the five years of principal payments, semi-annual interest payments, with that final maturity being February 1st, 2026.
Great, any questions? Any questions for Chris?
Perfect, well, thank you, I appreciate you going through it.
You bet, thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, with that then, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 9.14.20.37, awarding the sale of $114,000 GO equipment cert, Series 2020A, awarded to Core Trust Bank in Mayor, Minnesota. So a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thanks again, Chris. That will take us, Maggie, to 62A Public Works Worker Two, accept resignation.
All right, so this is, this is a two-part issue for the city tonight. So as you, as I've made known in an email, we did, we did receive a resignation from our current Public Works Worker Two employee. And their last day is to be on September 18th, 2020, so this Friday. This, this position is vital to the operation of the Public Works Department and needs to be filled. We only, we have two positions within the city in the Public Works Department. The other one being a Public Works Worker One position. I did include in the packet a tentative timeline as to how we would, or what it would look like, date-wise to filling the position, it would be about a two-month period. And possible items that would either have to be contracted or delayed, the biggest being snow removal. And then, the interview process would likely be early October, and then an offer made early October as well. But then, that would give us a tentative start date of October 26th, so.
Offer made date's just a little off, though, correct? Is that, counsel, right?
Right, exactly, it would have to go to counsel for final approval.
Push to the, the first council meeting in October.
Right. So I did include what we, what process we would have to go through and the job announcement and job description that we do have currently. Me and the public, me and Kyle did go through that description. So as you know, this position is a union position with the local 49ers. As part of the contract, there are set wage ranges. The options for discussion tonight are to, with the council are to, I know there's been some discussion on doing a counteroffer or to move ahead with a current employee, or a counteroffer with the current employee, or moving ahead with hiring a new employee. So I, I have, I do have information for questions. I just want to get a, get a feel for, for that. There are obviously pros and cons to both decisions. I, I know the, the one issue that I, that I'm concerned about is going into the season, into the snow season. We did have it set up that we would, this would be our first year with the snow plow, having, having snow operations brought in-house. I don't know if that would be feasible this year without these two current employees. We would likely have to consider going back to Widmer Construction, which we have asked tentatively if they'd be able to come back onboard to do snow services for us.
Here's what I would suggest, Maggie, just to stick with the agenda.
Right.
Let's table 62A, accepting the resignation.
Okay.
Let's have discussion first on what we want to do before we accept it.
All right.
In case we want to go back with something, if, if that's what comes out of the discussion. If not, then we'll bring that back and then accept the resignation and go from there. So just to keep the agenda accurate, so. Then we'll table that A, and then we'll move to B about filling it. Now you can go ahead and discuss on what your recommendation would be into the snow plowing and, and some of the discussion we had at Personnel Committee.
Yeah, so we did have a discussion, a preliminary discussion at Personnel about kind of what our options are. And there's been a lot of internal discussion as well. Again, options would be off, doing a counteroffer or moving ahead, filling the position. Either way, we would have to, there would be some budgeting, changes in the budget. So we, for 2021, we had removed some of our snow plowing budget because we were bringing in, bringing it in-house, we would have to amend that. We also did, did not have a part-time summer person, or employee this year because of, we decided not to go with it because of COVID-19. So we do have extra budgeted there. So there would definitely be some budget alterations that would need to happen regarding, regardless of what decision is made. My, my personal opinion, it, it's never easy to lose an employee, especially a good employee. We do have very good employees right now that know the job efficiently and well. Losing this employee would put, put us behind in, in our planning for taking on snow plowing and other projects that we have already established for the remainder of this year and the beginning of next year. We would need to find somebody that has extensive experience. And if we don't, it would require a lot of training to catch up. So a counteroffer, if we did make one, I don't, I don't have an, an exact number of what that would be. But I do have numbers in front of me that I've calculated, if you're curious.
Wait, how much of this can we talk about publicly? I don't, and plus, we have a union issue.
We have talked to, yes, it is a union position.
We can't enter any negotiations with Jason, we have to go through the union.
We can talk numbers?
Absolutely.
I mean, one decision would be if we, if, if we want to.
We, we haven't heard different from Tim. So just to back up a little bit, a lot of our concern, the biggest concern that we had at the Personnel Committee level was snow plowing. What are we gonna do? We gotta make sure Kyle cannot do it alone. We don't know if we're gonna get applicants, we don't, we're at the time of year now, and this timeline, we're in snow season. So our recommendation from Personnel Committee is, we have to contract it out again this year. We just, we don't have a choice, as far as I can see. We can't risk what kind of candidates we're gonna get. We might get a candidate comes in who can't drive the truck, doesn't know how to drive, you know. So that was a big piece of this, is what are we gonna do with that? So kind of our recommendation was gonna be, we're gonna have to contract out snow removal again. We can't get ourselves bound into it.
And what was Widmer's response?
He can do it.
Yeah, for more than previous years, because we keep dropping, coming back.
Absolutely, yep.
Yep.
So then, so then, one of the other options is, you know, do we go out and, and raise our rate, you know, our, our pay to try to get some of the best people in here who can jump right in and do some of that stuff? They don't know the cities, they don't know the streets yet, they don't know, you know, it makes it difficult. So that's where a lot of our conversation came from, is what we're gonna do. And that's gonna be another minimum of 20 grand to do a snow removal again for the season, like it's been costing us, if not upwards of that. So that's where some of that conversation came in. And then as Maggie, as talking with staff, and then more of a recommendation, if I'm, if I'm correct, that, you know, and talking with our attorney, talking with the union, that, that is, there is an option to do that. If, if we so desire that that's an option, we want to do, on what's best for the city.
To counter?
To, yep, it, it, it's certainly an option. Or we accept resignation, we go in and do that, you know, but I would hate to have to, now we gotta pay someone a little bit more, and boy, we had a, you know, we had someone in here who knew the city, knew everything, got along with every, so that's where some of the discussion, and it's open for discussion. Maggie, I didn't mean to hijack, so jump back in. But it's more open for discussion now on what, how do we want to move forward?
Well, I, I would be 100% to counter, to see if we can get Jason to stay. I think that we have two highly skilled and passionate people that care about the city. And I think money probably drove decisions. And I know that we were on the lower end of some of that, if you look at surrounding cities.
So how do you know that money drove his decision?
I don't know if it did or not.
We don't know, for sure.
No, we don't know, but that's a lot of reasons why people move jobs, is for money.
Money and benefits.
I don't think he was unhappy, but I.
Promotions.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where.
Change.
That's where you get a big raise.
And we've always, I mean, quite honestly, when you look at our hourly wage, what kind of employer are we expecting to get with the ranges we have anyway? I mean, they're not that competitive with surrounding areas in the Seven County metro area.
I thought we did feasibility studies to make us competitive.
Yeah, but when you look at what other communities are actually paying versus our pay range, what kind of people do we really expect to get? I don't expect to get someone with a Class, Class A CDL, you know, to drive a snow plow.
Can we share what we think his new pay range is, potentially?
I do have current pay range, and then I'm, I can.
I don't, I.
I could, I did not look it up, but I can, I can figure it out.
If they're offering him $60 an hour, there's nothing that we're gonna do. I mean, you know, we can touch that. But if they offered him $3 an hour more than what he's making here, then maybe that's, you know, that's something that we can.
Well, I think what we have to do is what we're most comfortable with.
Yes.
And, and not knowing what he is going for. And the worst case is, we're in the same boat we're in today. We at least tried to say, we care about you, we would like you to stay, we would be able to offer you this.
See, and I'm on the side of the sure thing. I'm on the side of accepting the resignation, it's obviously what he wanted. He didn't, to my knowledge, say, if I had this, that, or that, I would stay. And getting Widmer in here and making sure we got this covered. Kyle is gonna be on FMLA or maternity leave, aren't you, in, soon? And, and so there's that. That is, like, that leaves us with just one new person, or just Jason, either way. I think we need to get Widmer in here just for this year, and then start over. And when we rehire, then let's look at the, let's look at the pay scale and see if we're, see if we're that far off. I guess I thought we weren't.
We have a contract, and all the whole bargaining unit agreed to that.
Yeah.
So they were, they were fine with it, they agreed to it, so.
I mean, I don't even think the union embarked much at what we were offering, I can't.
I've gone back and forth, and I think from a counteroffer to not, I think it's, it's really, there's two philosophies on it. You do it or you don't, I mean, does someone then do it again? Or is it leverage to try to get more money from the job you've already accepted now? Now, they offer me more, so can I get more? Not that he would do it, and I'm, and I'm not saying that he would do that by any means, but that's some of the philosophies on it, yeah.
But what does it hurt?
But I'm.
We feel that it.
For me to spend 20 grand for Widmer to do snow removal, and we could counter with some, to try to keep a person, I think that's the way to go in this case. I look at it as a lot on what kind of employee are we gonna get? I, I kind of rank in my mind where I think Jason's, and the odds of getting someone better than him to me are slim.
Agreed.
And I think we'll get someone not up to his, his skill, and then we've lost the city's, the city's lot. That's, that's some of my thoughts on it. We gotta keep in mind, because of the bargaining unit, that it all has to go through the, through the union and negotiates that way. But that puts the other Public Works employee, now, they've, he's past him, so we gotta keep him, we gotta keep them both at the same. I mean, if, if there was a counteroffer, somehow we have to negotiate something with Public Works Work Number One. And give, so it's a dual, you know.
But my whole thing is, I mean, we own a business, and employees are your number one asset. And I think it's important, if you know you've got some really good ones.
Keep them.
To keep them. And we've always talked about that, you know, unfortunately for us, we could be, you know, a feeder city. You know, people come in, they get their experience, then they move on. Teachers do the same, you know, same thing, start in a smaller district, kind of build your relevancy. But I think we have like great, I think Jason and Kyle work well together. I, I think they're worth every penny, if not more. They probably do four people's jobs in two people. They go above and beyond, I mean, they're always fixing something. Jason built those hockey things. I mean, these are all things that he didn't have to do, but he did. So I would like to. Yeah, but I mean, I understand it's his job, but.
He also goes above and beyond, as they both do. And you know, you're only, as, as a city, you're only as good as your employees. You know, just like any business, you're only as good as your employees. Yeah, I, I don't want to be one of those starter cities.
Right.
For people, because that's not fair to Public Works One, that's not fair to the administrator, that's not fair to the residents of this community. So I, I'm with you, Nikki.
I can tell you, for the Public Works, for as long as I've been on council, any Public Works, I've never considered a counteroffer. And I certainly do in this case, I do in this case. I think it's what's best for us right now. I don't know how it'll go, I don't know how the negotiation, but again, it's that double. If, if we gave a buck an hour, which is $2,000 a year, we gotta give another buck to Public Works One to keep them at the same rate. So now we're into 2,000 for every doll, you know, or 4,000 for every dollar. But just the snow removal, you know, to have someone can do snow removal for the, the season.
When's his last day?
Friday.
And then you look at, you know.
Special meeting then, because we didn't really have.
If everyone's worried about, you know, paying the extra money, just think of how much. If everyone's worried about, you know, paying the extra money, just think of how much it costs to, you know, advertise.
Training and, yeah.
Also the training and I know at least with my job, you know, one of the things that they always comment is for the first six months, they lose five thousand dollars a month per person that they're training in because they're not up to speed. So, you know, you have to look at the cost that's entailed in all of that and, you know, hiring somebody, training somebody and it's just, you know, is it, is that gonna cost more than increasing wages?
So since Personnel decided this and, and I see which way you're going, has anybody sat down with Jason?
Personnel Committee did not decide that, this came after then.
This is your recommendation?
No, our recommendation was to move forward with Widmer. At the point, Public, Personnel Committee didn't come with a recommendation to counter. That came a day later with staff and, and as staff talked and they contacted said, you know what, we've, we've thought through this more. This is what we, this is what we're.
Has anybody had a conversation with the employee?
We cannot, we can't, the union can, we cannot.
Oh my goodness.
I agree with you, Tex. I, um, I think that when you're looking to make a career change like that, you think about all the options that you got going on. He decided that obviously there was something that is there that's better than here. And this is decided to go. I think we contracted with, contracts on falling out, I think we all agree. But we'll have to look for another, look for a new position.
I, um. I mean, I, I, I see that point. I can tell you for me, um, if, if it gets to the point where we're gonna, uh, give a counter offer, I have no interest in getting into a back and forth that here's this and then a bit, you know, a negotiation. I have no, I, I'd like to put a good faith, um, amount and see, and if it does, it does. To try, now I, I'm not talking ten dollars an hour by any means, you know, um.
My other line of thought is we just got out of negotiations. It was a well-thought-out process. And then a couple of months later, um, an employee is looking for a new position. And I wanna say that there's something more than money then because that, those benefits and the things that were negotiated were really pretty nice. I mean, you have to weigh everything that we offer, not just our, I, I mean, and it was, it was researched and studied.
And that's some of where our salaries were, I think.
I mean, that's where we have to go forward, right? I get that, I totally get that.
You would really.
Why are they looking? But to counter offer i- is just, I don't know if that's gonna get him what he's looking for.
And you bring up a good point because some of the salaries when we were doing the negotiation, it was, um, health insurance was a bigger piece and more important.
They have excellent health insurance.
And we got really good health insurance, so the salaries then weren't quite, maybe up to maybe.
And then the comp time.
But.
Most places don't have the comp time.
That was part of that contract, but.
So you have to count like all that into it and, and we did and, I mean, they, it's not like we said, this is what we're doing. I mean, they, it was a back and forth situation and I thought they were happy when we were done, but.
And I don't even know if it's.
That's why I kind of am leaning towards the, let's accept this, let's look at what's going on and move forward. And make sure we get Widmer in here this year to help Kyle.
Lot of money. Is there a possibility also i- i- if we go down the path and we were gonna make an offer, is there any way to get some sort of commitment from the employees that, yeah, here's a good, I'll stay, I'll, I'll stay for another two years minimum? Or those, you know, a commitment from that side of thing, or is that not even a?
We can't do that.
Because of the union?
No.
You'd have to get negotiated through that.
We can't do that.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we're gonna be spending money either way. So we can invest it into our employees or we can pay a contractor to do the snow removal. And, I mean, I, I think of it as, we have nothing to lose. And maybe we have to have a special meeting to approve if, if they choose not to do it and we need to open up and start the hiring process. But what's the, I mean, I would hope that we'd be able to get something to them this week before his end date. And then, you know, if he says yes, great, then we don't have to do step two. And if we don't, either way, it's a lot of money. It's less money if we offer it to the employees than Widmer doing the contract.
We'd have extra money in the coffers because we are now taking it out of in-house. So some of that money I hope was accounted for in the higher budget for Public Works, right? Because we had to pay extra money for snow plowing in-house. There should be extra money in there also.
I do have numbers, so I, I, I mean, we haven't done, we've done some of the snow plowing, but Widmer was still in contract this last season. So we haven't spent, uh, about sixteen thousand of our salt and our snow plowing budget, um, for twenty twenty. For twenty twenty. So we do have money left there. We also, again, like I said, we did not take advantage of that summer position as well. So we have extra money there.
We won't be paying salary for some, for a while also, we won't be paying salary for a while too.
So that was accounted for in the twenty twenty budget, right? Extra Public Works salaries because they were going to be snow plowing now.
Right, right, I mean, we do have.
I get it saved us some, but there was still extra money that should have been in there. It's actually one of my questions on the line items, but.
Okay.
I don't know.
All right, any other discussion? I can entertain a motion, I, um, don't know what. Well.
I don't know what it'll look like.
You know what, I'll start, I'll make a mo, I'll start and make a motion. I'll make a motion that we, counter offer Jason through the union for a two dollar an hour raise for Public Works Worker Two and Public Works Worker One. Two dollars an hour through the union. If it's rejected, then we move forward with posting with this job description here.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Two dollars, two dollars an hour, two thousand four, that's about eight thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I have numbers if you want me to. It's.
Can you do what two is and do you have what three would be?
Yeah, I have, so two dollars would be four thousand one hundred sixty per employee and then three would be six thousand two hundred forty per year.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries three, two.
So now what's your next step?
My next step would be to present that offer, see if it's accepted and if it's not, then I would post.
And post the, so you don't need, that was a part of your motion?
Yes, yep, that was my request, if it's rejected, then we move forward.
I wonder if we can add on, add on to the posting if we would also include Widmer in on, if we could do another, I don't know.
Wait, no, that's not an agenda, I, I mean, we can add that, it's not.
Oh, all right, that's fine.
What is this, September, we have another meeting in September? Yeah, might have to, it might have to wait, we'll, we, we'll have to wait and see what happens, I guess, and.
Okay.
All right, with that, then we will move to six, three, uh, A, twenty twenty-one street improvement.
Okay, so, um, at some, at, the, um, some, some of our latest workshops, we've been talking about the twenty twenty-one street improvement projects. This year we started, um, our, our, um, plan with a portion of Coldwater Crossing. That was a mill and overlay project. Next year we're, uh, I mean, this year we're starting to plan for our twenty twenty-one project that is likely to include, based on staff recommendation, the reconstruction of Fifth Street East and West of Highway twenty-five and Third Street between Blue Jay Avenue and Trunk Highway twenty-five. So the initial process to start that planning of the project would include the following services from the engineer. It would be a topographic survey and soil borings. So they would look at the existing conditions within the right of way, do soil borings and analyze, um, the structure, the current structure along the road. And then they would do a feasibility study that would include, um, the reconstruction projects typically involve assessments and so we would have to do us, um, what that would all entail as well. It would include, uh, doing public, a public open house with affected properties and then, um, preliminary assessment rolls, um, as well. So this, just for planning purposes, if this is the project we wanna do in twenty twenty-one, we would approve an amount of eighteen thousand five hundred, um, to be built on an hourly basis for the city engineer to start that process. With that, if we were to move forward, we would also wanna start our, um, start looking at our, the financing again for their, our street projects moving forward. So, but tonight we're just focusing on doing the feasibility work with the city engineer.
Some discussion, uh, last meeting, but from the original street project plan, we didn't have the west side of Fifth Street on there, correct?
We did not. Yeah, we did, um, I think it was at a Public Works meeting that we decided to expand the project.
Spent some discussion, then my understanding is if we are gonna go through the assessment process, we must have a feasibility study, correct?
Right.
Do you know if they're also looking at the sewer and water lines?
It would include looking at that and if we do need to upgrade those at all, cause it, when you do a full reconstruction, you do consider what's underneath as well.
I was just curious.
Yep.
I think he has most of that televised now, so we should have a pretty good handle on how it, what shape it's in. Which will be helpful.
Cause I know that's what they did with Rents Road.
Yeah.
Is they ended up redoing it just cause they were digging it in and it was.
That's right.
Right.
And I know last time we discussed, um, we were gonna look at our assessment policy to see, and so what did we find out about that?
Um, I will, I have not brought it back to you, I can bring that, that back. But yes, um, our policy does include assessments. I can get that information back to you as to what percentage. It, and again, if we need to review it and alter or change, make any alterations, we would do that before this project. But yeah, we haven't done an assessment project.
You should probably get a handle on it just to make sure, cause we have a lot of corner lots and I know corner lots are different and.
Yeah.
From that aspect, okay. All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to authorize Bolton and Mank, uh, to perform a feasibility study for the proposed twenty twenty-one street improvement project, including Fifth Street East and West of twenty-five and Third Street between Blue Jay Avenue and Trunk Highway twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second, uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries five, zero. All right, um, City Council reports, Eric, anything you report on?
The garbage company, weren't they going to replace the smaller bins with larger recycling bins?
They should have done that all by now, if you.
The way in our neighborhood it is.
Okay.
Small ones?
Mine's huge. I got mine on Friday, they had, they had, uh, it was like a waste management parade on my street. It was the garbage truck and then, uh, the guy that, another box truck that took the old one and then put, maybe they ran out.
Anyone that hasn't, I'll just put something on social media and on the website to contact me, cause my under.
It's our entire neighborhood, I've heard from at least ten people.
Okay.
That is not, um, so I don't think it's on us to try to get a hold of. When you call them, I, I called, they don't know what I'm talking about.
Oh, you know what it could be, you guys, we were recycling this past Friday, the we- west side of.
Yeah, so east side, east side was.
I had recycling, I, my day recycling was actually this past, it was Friday because our labor day.
If you're on the west side, some peo, they did run out of carts and so they were gonna pick any remainders they were gonna do.
Recycling would be this Thursday.
But if they think, if they're telling us they're done, then that's not the case.
Oh.
If they say they're done, can you drive through that neighborhood and kinda look around? A lot of people leave them out, see if they have smaller ones?
Right.
It is recycling, correct, Erin, that aren't ninety-six gallon?
Yes.
Tell you anything?
Um, no, the fire station committee had a meeting, I was not able to, well, I didn't get my email in time, so I didn't get to attend. And that's all I've really had.
Liz? And, um, I just had the Personnel Committee meeting that we've discussed, so then we'll open up, uh, Deputy Jacobson, is there anything you wanna add as a report of anything going on in the city that's going on or hot topics? Troublemakers?
There is in the Fieldstone neighborhood.
If you could, if you could come up to the, could you come up to the, thank you.
There is in the Fieldstone neighborhood, someone driving through that empty lot. Not the cornfield or whatever field that is, but to the other side of the road. I'm guessing it's from after practices, I won't name the school's name. No, but, uh, yeah, so I'll be keeping an eye on Fieldstone. That's really all we have. I might get in contact with Kyle to move that speed sign. It seems like people are slowing down because of traffic anyways on twenty-five. Uh, so it doesn't really do us any justice when they have to slow down with all the cones in the road anyways. We're getting a lot of speeders doing the forty-five on Coldwater Cross, Crossing, um, so I'm posted there Monday through Friday if you can't tell. So, um, at least trying to people to slow down that forty-five to thirty. Because especially with hitting crossing being kind of a blind entry, I'm afraid someone's gonna plow through that.
Be sure to work with him, he can put it wherever you want and all that data can be, he should be downloading that and letting you, so you can see the speeds, the times, so you know.
Like I said, I'm not as concerned about twenty-five right now because there's so many orange cones telling you to slow down anyways. That I think I will probably have, see if Kyle can move it to Coldwater Crossing for a little bit. Coming into, towards twenty-five, so coming in from New Germany on thirty, so. Uh, other than that, yeah, I'll keep an eye on that field, um, and other than that, Mayor's been pretty good.
You gotta know the community will.
Getting there.
Well, no, good.
Yeah, so.
Oh, great, it's great to have you.
Enforcing any code violations?
Uh, I typically do not. If I do it on off-hours, we have a CSO that will come in and do code, so we have had a couple parking violations and such. And my CSOs will let me know what's going on in Mayor as far as that goes. As soon as the first snowfall hits, you'll see that change, cause parking violations will go crazy, there'll be orange tags over everything. So once snowbird season hits, then I will start enforcing or running tags with my CSOs in the city for city ordinances. So that's where we're at.
Perfect, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. All right, any other business? With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, same sign? We are adjourned. All right. So we're gonna have, we still have a work session, if you guys wanna stay for the work session, feel free, otherwise.
Zoo.
Yeah.
See a lot of notes out there.
That's why we took that pause, we kinda figured you guys would leave.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
If it's possible, could you still try to get out on patrol? And find out what they do for an assignment for coming here and see if we can get kinda some feedback to what, kinda some things that they, I don't know if they have to write a paper for being here.
Oh, right.
Do something, it'd be nice to get a little feedback and kinda what they thought of the meeting, how it went. Obviously, they can't give names and all that stuff, but if you could reach out to their, start with Joel maybe and I'd be curious to what, you know, what the assignment is and, and what they thought of the meeting and how it went.
I like that they come, I think that's.
Yeah.
Smart for whatever social studies teacher doing it.
Yeah, yeah, they do it every year, right, this time of year.
Yeah.
Busy with them. Okay, let's jump right into the work session and let's talk about the lease con, we'll start with lease contract.
Okay, so, uh, this is just a continuation of our discussion on the twenty twenty-one contract with Carver County Sheriff's Department. And I, I don't want to be too redundant. Um, we, as you know, we're at point eight-eight. Um, our contract, if we stayed at point eight-eight, would go up three thousand eighteen dollars. And we would continue to share with New Germany. The last meeting, um, it was requested that we get some information about citations um from two thousand nineteen and this year, so I did include those in the packet. What it does is it goes over the traffic citations, it goes over calls for services and then total calls for services. So as you can tell, it goes from January to only August of this year, but then twenty nineteen is a full year of information. So with that, I, I am open to additional discussion on the contract. Um, I did include the contract information again, um, what it would look like. And then, just, just for budget purposes, we do, we just need to keep working on this and moving forward. Are there any specific questions that you have currently?
Are you receiving corporal pay?
Me?
Yeah.
Not yet, but I don't think I'm eligible for it just because of where I'm at in my time at the county.
I would check on that, because um, at one point, I thought there was a time when corporals receiving extra pay, and um, they actually, they stopped doing that and they rolled all the pay into everybody. Um, so my, I would like, I would be interested in knowing if there is a difference between a regular deputy and a corporal, and what um, what extra we are paying for.
Okay.
Good point.
It's been that way for, I've gone obviously five years.
Yeah.
There, there was corporal pay at one time.
So you mean that's what we're getting charged?
Well, I, you know, maybe.
I know with me, you are not, currently. Um, mainly, like I said, I stepped in halfway through. I don't even know if Bankston was.
Yeah, I, I don't. They're probably not, so instead of deputy, they're saying that it's, it's corporal pay. I'm just wondering if there is corporal pay anymore, because I know at one point it had gone away. They just wrapped it in everybody, so. That's the only thing that I had. I'm assuming that they'll come back and say that's the same as deputy pay.
Okay, I can ask.
Any other thoughts on the contract on?
Um, well, for me, and this is nothing against you, because you're new, you just started. Um, I don't feel like we've been getting our money's worth on the police contract. Just not getting the res- yeah.
Yeah, I.
I feel there's a, a real disconnect.
Code enforcement is just important as state statute important and the city's a.
Yeah.
That, in the, in our, in our city at least, that's what I think. When I, when I was a deputy, I was writing code violations, if that's what the site, whatever guidance the city gave me, I, I, you know, I went with that.
Right.
And um, you know, maybe it's an issue where we're not expressing to the sheriff's office what it is we're fully looking for. That could be it, because I'm, I would assume if you had a perfect, if you knew exactly what it is we are looking for, you would, you'd be right on top of that. So maybe it's a communications on, on our side, but I think this has been a topic of discussion at many, this time of year about code enforcement.
Right, yeah.
Couple of years now of that, and.
But I'm at the point where I don't even want to renew the contract, because I don't feel like we're getting the services, you know, that we as a council have been looking for.
What we expect a typical town cop model is.
Yeah, we're not getting that.
I think we need to then get to the root cause of that. Is it the communication problem, or is it? Or is it nah, we're not doing it, you know?
Well, we've talked to the, we've talked to the sheriff when he's come here.
And they want to charge us extra for, to have a C S O come in and do that kind of stuff.
Right.
Oh, I thought they were under the assumption, no, go ahead, we can work through that and we can have the deputy do it, as was my.
He said that he could have the deputy do it as long as we had all the codes in their computer system.
Okay.
True.
And.
Which is that a big undertaking?
They are.
And they're in there. Okay, so.
Or they were at one point.
So then why haven't, in the past, why haven't these ever been enforced?
I would imagine it's because we're not on, on sheriff's administration saying, this is what we want, this is what we want done. I mean, I guess if, if there's issues that, you know, we see that aren't being addressed, you know, we need to bring it up with, with our corporal and, you know, sheriff's administration. I think it's probably.
Because if I'm looking at the two thousand and nineteen traffic citation summary, and there's three for speed for the entire year of two thousand and nineteen, there's a job that's not being done.
That, that's, I mean, I've done three in the first two weeks of speed. And not more than that, but I mean, and I know you're not saying to me specifically.
Right, this is two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen, so that's surprising to me if that's accurate data on speed.
Well, this is based on the report coming from Carver County.
That's uh.
So. Um, so.
I'm not gonna say it's on, but.
Past philosophies were education.
Um, I have no problem. I guess I haven't had a communication meeting as far as ordinance goes. I know I've asked for an ordinance sheet as far as like the newest ordinances when I came in. Last week I touched base to see if I can get an ordinance sheet. Um, we don't have them coded in our computer per like city ordinances. We have your basic ordinances, just to kind of give you some insight on like, you know, animal calls and such like that. Um, I have no problem doing the ordinances. Uh, animals typically will go through our C S O just because they do the impounding with the truck and everything. I have no problem enforcing ordinances. Um, ordinances, other than parking, however, are hard to do with my hours. Um, just because I work evening hours, a lot of those ordinances are given out during the day or lawn ordinances. I don't want to be knocking on doors, you know, at eight o'clock when someone's coming home from work or with their family, as far as that. Now, do I have an issue doing it? Absolutely not. Um, so if I have a list of what you guys are focusing on ordinances, I have no problem. I've gone to a lot of the businesses in Mayor. I'm trying to make that communication better from the city to.
Because I know, I mean, I run a lot and I run in every neighborhood, and I can tell you, you know, what houses have what violations going on and have for years and years and years, and nothing's ever been done about it.
Okay.
So, you know, a lot of it is weed, it's parking, it's garbage and, you know, taking up the whole.
Sure.
Drive away.
You know, and that, I'm not, that's on us. I mean, this, our sheriff's office is, we are, we are more reactive towards things like that than we've ever been proactive. So uh, if it, if it mattered to a city and that city council or city administrator says, this is what's important, they will do it.
But we've been saying that for years to them.
Right, I don't.
And he's, I mean. Sheriff Jason has been sitting right here, and we express it to him.
Who is it from the sheriff's department then? Is it the sheriff? Is it a commander, Commander Wallen? Then I, we, we have to have a work session then with the deputy with, and, and know what we want. We all have what's our hot items that we want to see get take care of. One of my big pet peeves is the sidewalks. They don't get shoveled after twenty-four hours. They have bugs.
Or graffiti.
That drives me nuts. I want to see some of that get taken care of, you know, but.
I know what the flat.
Can we switch to the evening, because we're.
There's more calls.
Going with that one, I, there's gonna be some pushback. You're gonna say that's a public, that's gonna be, that's a local ordinance thing that.
Okay, so that.
Sidewalks are not, that's not, that's not a law enforcement issue.
It's not, okay.
But that's, but that's something that city administrator or public works can do.
Like parking tabs, like if a car is not.
And those.
Tabs are five years old, not sitting on the front lawn.
Responsibility goes to, I'm fine with that, but we, we gotta sit down and get the, it's, it seems we kind of have, and it's just hasn't gone anywhere.
I agree, it's, it's lack of follow.
Yep.
You know, like watering ban is gonna be very important to us right now.
Have you been talked to about watering? Have you been talked to about watering? If you see people?
I've seen the signs that are out.
Have you been talked to, to ask if you see people irrigating?
Yeah.
Without water tar- that was supposed to happen.
Right, we sat down, I, that, I failed.
Being shut down.
Right, we did.
What did it go out in a newsletter? I will say that.
We sat down, I did fail to mention the watering ban.
Okay.
So.
So something, but maybe it's just a matter of getting this list and figuring out then who is going to be the responsible person for it and, and do it, but.
I think we start with you. I think, you know, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, like I said.
We, we filter at the city administrator and say, hey, this is what we think is important, and then you guys, they can work it out, and then if it gets to the point where stuff's nothing done, you know, still go up to, um, to go up that chain of command.
One hundred percent. I can back myself, you know, as soon as I got any emails from the city, I take care of it within twenty-four hours, or someone on my staff does, as of now.
Right.
I don't think that is fault, and I think she can vouch to that. If I'm told what to do, I'm one of those people that I'm gonna do it. So if you have ordinances that are bugging you, I don't care. Call the city or call my non-emergency line and it'll get taken care of. Uh, go through the city, I'll get the emails, I check my emails from the city and I get that done first and foremost. Or I have my C S O do it, even if I'm on, and if I'm on and I'm closer than him, I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
I have no issue with that. You know, I can't speak for my predecessor, I wasn't him. I also was not, you know, in this area. So, what I ask, at least for me, give me what you want done. If I fail, then that's on me. Until then.
What about driving through the neighborhoods, getting to know the kids?
Every single neighborhood as a director of control.
Okay.
Um, I hit Fieldstone, I hit Coldwater, and I hit Hitting Crossing every night.
Okay.
And in the off-time, I'm here, so I'm in Old Water, or I'm in Old Mayor, so, uh, that's what I call it, sorry. I called out.
What, what about getting to know the kids and everything like that? I know you're just starting, so how are you doing with getting?
As to getting in touch, I, any kid that's out, I'm waving and saying hi.
So you're stopping or whatever, if you got time?
Wave out, I put my windows down if it's not cold or if it's not raining. My windows are down and I'm going maybe ten or fifteen miles through.
Okay.
Fieldstone, I've been tending to hit between six and seven. Coldwater Crossing, I tend to hit between seven and eight. It all depends on when I'm also running traffic or doing other calls. Uh, I'm a very community-forward person. That's first and foremost what I did. You know, when I first started, I went to the businesses and gave out my business cards. Um, if I go to a business that I haven't had a call with, that's what I'm giving. When I met all of you guys, I give you guys business cards, so you guys know who I am and what I'm about. My goal is community policing, that's how I've always ran. I'm obviously there to work if I need to work, if I need to get into action, but I enjoy being involved in the community.
You've already been to like two council meetings.
Yeah, I've.
Like, that's huge.
I will show my face at council meetings uh, as best as I can. Obviously, I've got an earpiece, so if I dart, I'm gonna dart.
Right, yeah.
Um, give me what you guys want as far as from August to December. I don't know what time you guys have contracts, that's not up to me. Um, I'm happy whatever I'm doing, so.
Can you talk to those people about the graffiti on the shed?
On?
Because I bought a paint can, a can of paint, and if that doesn't get covered soon, I'm gonna do it myself.
Which, which.
That's vandalism.
The shed right here.
It's not vandalism, I'm cleaning up vandalism.
Uh, it's the, the one by the creamery.
Right over here by the creamery.
Yeah, and you, and when you're sitting at Agave, all you see is this graffiti?
I can go by there and look at, do you know who's doing it?
Not a clue, and it's been there for quite a while, but yeah, I finally bought myself a can of paint, because I'm like, if no one else is gonna do it, I'm just gonna just go over it, I don't care.
Yeah, we were getting some under the bridge off of twenty-three here, under the bridge.
Yeah, I saw some of that too.
That, Bankston talked to them and made them go clean it.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe what we should do is maybe have a work session, just talk about what it is that we see as our priorities.
Okay, I, I'm on board with that.
I'm.
Look by you, I mean, if, if you think it's something where, you know, either.
I would love to know what the priorities are for me.
Jason needs to come, but.
Well, we owe that to you. I mean.
Oh, totally.
Direction, so.
If you don't know what our priorities are, you don't know what it is you're looking for.
Exactly, and how can you succeed at your job?
I, I absolutely understand what both Liz and Eric are saying in this. I, I would, I would hate to not have this contract and set the city up to not have any, and not have anything that I, I, I'm liking these hours. I think these hours are working. I've talked to Joe about them before. I mean, they seem to, better than uh, what we had. But it's really just sitting down and really just, here's what it is and, and everyone's in agreement to it, and starting Monday, we, here we go. So yeah, let's do that, let's add that to uh, uh, one of the next council or uh, work sessions. So we have time to discuss it and then get that contract signed. I don't want to wait till December again to sign the contract.
These are driving all over the place.
Uh, yeah, they're out in New Germany too.
That's our next item.
I did catch, sorry, I did catch a group of them in New Germany. Whether or not they're coming down thirty to here, I do not know. Um, I haven't seen it again in New Germany yet, so with that being said, when I find them, they stop. I'm not gonna, I won't play games. I literally, I will call parents, I'll call grandparents, whoever I need to. They're gonna get a warning from me, hey, I'm your friend right now. If I find you again, I'm not gonna be your friend. It's not gonna happen. Um, so, I don't like ATVs, they're dangerous, kids are out in the middle of the night, and they're gonna get, they're gonna get hurt.
All right.
Yes.
Are we good with the police contract then? For now, we'll set up a meeting.
I do have a, I do have a police question though. Um, there's a couple of kids with like these little mini mopeds. They're like pink and purple. They're like real tiny mini mopeds, and they're.
They're Razor brand, you know?
Are those street legal? Because I see them every single day, at nighttime, between different neighborhoods.
Are these street legal? No. However, they're partially street legal if there's no sidewalks in the neighborhood. So you have to understand that they obviously just like running. You have to be able to have a place to do running and walking. So, are they close enough to the curb? Are they, you know, zipping like this through the roads? That's the difference. But because not everywhere in Mayor has a sidewalk.
Correct.
You have to err on the side of, well then, why are runners allowed to run next to the curb? So, no, they cannot go past neighborhoods. They cannot go onto thirty, they can't go onto like twenty-five, they can't go onto major roads, absolutely not. Um, can they be in their neighborhood? Gray line, just because there's no sidewalks on every road.
Understandable.
Does that make sense?
Yep, okay. Yeah, I've just been getting worried because, I mean, they're out like at dusk and dark and I'm not seeing lights and I can hear them and.
No headlights, nor blinking lights, that's something different. So just like bikers, they have to be visible. They have to have a headlight, they have to have a red light.
Those are all that looks like a little Vespa, a little pink dress.
Yeah, it's just like a little mini Vespa-looking thing, and I'm like, that's really cool, but.
Is this in Coldwater Crossing?
No, hidden.
Hidden?
And I've seen them go back and forth and they, they take it up.
Okay, I know exactly who you're talking about.
And they go up to Mayor Mobile Mart and go down twenty-five, okay.
Couple words about safety.
Yeah, that, that's my biggest concern is safety, and there's a pink one and a purple one, so.
Um, I probably have some flashers I can probably give them to from the county, so.
All right, let's move to three ATV ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you, Ellie.
My good guys, do you use ATV?
If you want to stay for the ATV part of it, you might want to stick just for this.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, we did talk about this in a, another meeting, and currently under our current code, we do not allow ATVs. It's a, it's.
No.
We're a semi-county metro area, you cannot ride a four-wheeler through the community.
Correct.
You can ride the, you can ride the green one.
No, yeah, that's, right.
Class one, class two, I mean, as, so we don't get confused in terminology.
Yeah, class one is, is the one where you have the handlebars and, and it's, um, but the class two is more of a uh, wheel. Um, and they have different, typically have different w- wheel sizes and, and it's, it can get a little complicated because there's such a variety. Um, but it, yeah, it depends on like the weight, the, the wheel size and, and the type of steering wheel.
Wheelbase.
Um, so, yeah, going forward with an ordinance to allow it, um, would essentially, the state does allow certain types um, on their roads and on the county roads, and they do regulate it, and so we would have to be consistent with their regulations. And that would include allow, allowing only the AT, the class two, um, like the side-by-sides. And so I did put together, I, I know another commu- Watertown's working on this as well.
It passed.
It passed, okay.
It passed, obviously, on Tuesday.
So, I mean, we have had requests, we do have people come in asking if this is something the city council would consider. We do have them in town. Really, it's not about being on the roads long-term, it's about getting from place to place is what the ordinance would do. It would allow um, one person to go from their house to a business or to cross the road or to essentially just make a connection. Right now, we don't allow that um, at all, and so the ordinance, um, and I did base this very similar off of what Watertown was working on, because it, we have very similar ordinances and it, and it just seemed to work very similar, but we would, if we did consider um, this as a, would be kind of a template. Um, we would expand our recreational vehicle discussion too, but we would allow.
Do we allow class one ATVs? Do we have no trails they can ride on?
I don't think we're, we're not trying out.
No, it's not class one, no, it'd be class two.
The current ordinance says that they're all restricted.
Right, you can't do anything.
What I'm seeing here is that we are gonna add the green one to be okay, to be allowed, but also have some restrictions.
Yes.
Correct.
Now, would that include not being able to go on twenty-five or thirty? Because their argument is they're street legal and they should be able to be on the streets.
Well, those are regulated by.
You can go on a county road.
Right, then that's, that's by state statute.
They can go on the county road?
Yeah, you can drive.
Yeah.
Why, we don't even need an ordinance?
Well, we do for our city streets.
For our city streets?
All right.
Yeah, and the state.
If you were.
State statute allows us to expand it at, at a local level, but it has to be consistent with what they allow.
So you have to like, local is, you have to, if you're under eighteen, you have to have a helmet on. Um, Watertown, I reached out and they, um, we found out you have to be, they are registered and insured, all these machines. Um, the drivers must have a license or a permit with a licensed driver, so similar, any follow-the-road. They have to have headlights, taillights. Um, the drivers must have a license or a permit with a licensed driver. So similar, any follow the roads. You have to have headlights, taillights to drive at night. Pretty much have to follow all the rules of a regular car and they're legal on the county roads.
Yeah, and class one, the, the other ones, uh, do allow a wider range of, of youth to ride them. I think it can go as young as even.
Thirteen, I think it said. It's thirteen with a, with a permit and class.
Right.
It's kinda like a snowmobile.
Right, and so we would not go into that.
No, we wouldn't.
All for allowing class two on city streets.
Agreed.
Mm-hmm.
I'm for that.
Yeah, I think.
I'm fine with, I've read through this and I'm good with it. And, and one of the concerns that I got talked, and this is probably a year ago, a person has one, they have a plow on it, they plow driveways.
Mm-hmm.
They said, well, I can't go around now because I can't get on, I can't go on the city streets to go plow driveways.
Whoever stopped them.
You know, but.
Nobody.
Well, some people follow the ordinances, I mean.
That's nice.
Well, it's funny, today I saw someone in Watertown, you know, because it's, it passed on Tuesday.
I'm all for class twos in the city and I'm fine with the, what you've done here.
No, they do have, um, safety features. So like you have to have your seatbelt on or it won't go faster than fifteen miles an hour. Those are some of the safety things.
Right, what? There's a dead man's switch, isn't there?
Uh, not.
That's required in the ordinance.
Yeah. But you have to eighteen, like they'd have to follow all the normal rules ex- and, but they have to be a licensed driver.
No. Golf carts are not.
Lou.
So they have to get approved by the city to have a golf cart?
Mm-hmm.
And you can't be ten years old driving it by yourself with your six-year-old sister in the, next to you.
Did this thing talk about golf carts? I don't know that it did.
Uh, in the state definition, which it's ru- like this code references state, state, the state statute does say this, does not include golf carts.
The state statute says what?
Golf course.
It says it does not, this does not include golf carts.
And we right at the beginning say this is a.
It's a reference to the.
State statute.
No, I agree. I mean, I think, you know, allowing the class two, I would support that.
It's like driving a car. I mean, you have a seatbelt and, like I said, you can't go faster than fifteen miles an hour if you don't have your seatbelt engaged. I mean, there's always ways around things, but. And they have.
Any other concerns with the first read on this? Anything jumped out? I don't, I have anything either, Maggie. All right, let's move on to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one preliminary budget.
So, um, as you know, um, we did go over this before. Um, we do have to get our preliminary approval at the September twenty-eighth meeting because it's due on September thirtieth. The county. Um, honestly, I didn't, I haven't changed much at all because I'm still waiting for some information. One, I'm waiting to see what happens with the fire station project and, um, some other, some other items. So I, I have budgeted high in some areas and that's why our rate is where it's at. I think it's fifty-four seventy. Um, but again, it's, it's best, like I've said in the past, to go high and then be able to work through the budget later and, and take those things, take it down. Um, I know I have provided, I did email you, um, per request to show kind of, I know we do quarterly updates. Um, which hopefully keeps you on track of where we're at on, on budget items. Um, I did email you and.
Can you go back to that nine percent increase?
Oh, sorry. Yep.
And I, and I've read through there. I'm not seeing what's, how are, from what I'm reading there, where's nine point one percent coming from? I'm, I'm not sure.
So if you, so if you see, last year, we had the one million and, one million, uh, one thousand four hundred and three. So we did increase, um, ninety-one thousand in our general budget.
But where is that? I'm not seeing it here in your, in your.
Page forty. Go to page forty, she's got the government and there's your increases right there.
There's our biggest, there it is. Thank you.
Now, is this including, I know you're, I know it's still tweaking.
Right.
But we're still looking at, you know, now we got the snowplow and we got the potential for increasing wages potentially, I mean.
I, yeah, so I do, right, so.
Government though, four hundred and sixty-three to four sixty-nine isn't a forty-two percent increase.
Well, that's just forty-two percent of the.
Of the budget, of the budget, okay.
Right. Um.
The one below, the, see the dollar change on forty-one page?
Oh, sorry.
Forty-one?
Yeah, she shows you that's five thousand nine hundred and sixty, so it shows the ninety-one year, ninety-one thousand.
That's the part I was missing. I was reading through it all and I'm like, this doesn't make sense, but.
Park and Rec was up twenty-five, Public Works is up forty-six.
So what was our number from the rate, the study we had done? Was it Aylers who did that study for us?
Uh, ABDO.
That was ABDO and had kinda what they thought are, are projected.
Yeah, usually what they recommend is, uh, a three to three point five percent increase all around. Um, yeah, so that's what our, that recommendation was, so. Um.
So can we just, and I, I've asked this before, can we just have a, a special meeting that talks about just the budget? Going through these line items, trying to understand why they're gonna go up. Do they need to go up?
Yeah, and I, I, I guess the last meeting we had, I, I was hoping that we would have these, like, just with the information that.
But it's never, so now it's eight o'clock. If we start doing this the way that I like to do them, it's gonna be, you know, that's an hour.
Yeah, and that's why I believe the last meeting, we only had, this is like maybe one or two items. And so I was hoping at that meeting, we would go into more detail, but.
Um, if you look at page forty-one, I mean, it kind of explains why they're increasing. The wage increases, the transitions, the increase in the police contract, the small increases for fire departments. So we know why they're going up. I mean, I don't think that we need to go line by line and go, okay, well postage is this and mailings are that and.
But I can definitely sit down with you, um, before the next meeting and we can go through it. I'm, I, I do have that ability to sit down with you before the next meeting.
Um, yeah, I mean, definitely before this, this budget is finalized, we're gonna need to go through it and probably cut some things.
Yeah.
Because the increase to.
But we do that at, this, we always wanna start high and then after.
After September.
After September eighth, then.
As we go on, can we just have a meeting where we just get the budget figured out? It doesn't have to be next meeting. It doesn't have to be, but before we set that final one.
In December.
Right, yep, we would definitely.
Budgeting meeting on our.
Because I don't want this to, I don't want this to end up like this. I just don't, it's, the tax rate jumped up too high. We have to look at it and figure out what's going on.
Well, yeah, and there's a lot of unknowns right now.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And a lot of things that will go down or get cut. I just wanted to make sure that we're gonna be okay preliminarily so that we can cut back later.
What do you have in for fire department now for twenty twenty-one for the new?
Do you have eighty-eight?
Hmm?
Didn't you put like eighty-eight thousand?
Oh, for, um.
Hasn't that always been the number?
Yeah, so the fire station's eighty-eight, high, eighty-five, high end.
Okay.
Yep, so that's, that's what we think. That's based on the four million to two hundred thousand projection. So it'll come down quite a bit. I just wanted that in there because I wanna shoot high.
Those reasons, I get that. So off the top of your head, I know you don't have your spreadsheet in front of you and all that. I, I, I get that. So we're at fifty-four percent, uh, tax rate.
Right.
How much do we need to cut approximately? How much would we need to cut out of this in the next couple of months to get us down to fifty?
Yeah, so I, I would say about forty to forty-five thousand.
That's it.
That's it.
We cut forty-five grand out and we're right now where we, okay.
Right.
It's not a hundred and fifty thousand now, okay.
No. No.
Then I'm comfortable with this number, sending it in. We have some unknowns. We know what we need to do. Um.
We always want it, because we can never increase it. We can only decrease. And that's what our stance has always been.
I just.
Every, yeah, that's.
Agree, but I do like what Tyce says is when we have that meeting where we kinda do a little bit more line by line because it just helps us relook at the numbers and where, like, okay, well, we aimed high on this and it's actually pro- probably gonna be here. Because I know you cut some budgets already.
Right, so, um, yeah, if you look at.
Worst comes to worst, we can cut forty thousand right out of park board. Take it right out of park board and then give them forty grand out of the, out of the fund to use instead. I mean, we could, we could easily do that.
Right, but she did, she had, she, we were at two, a hundred thousand usually every year and then she moved it to seventy-five.
Yeah.
So I know, I mean, not saying.
Any number, I mean, we can always u- that's where we should be using that fund and, and rely on some of that. If this is a year we need it, let's do it, but.
And that's what we did at the park board. We did.
I feel comfortable with this. Do you want more specifics of Maggie? Are you looking for a comfort level? Are you looking for, this is your number? Are you gonna bring this next meeting?
This is the number I'm gonna bring, um, unless, unless somebody, unless there are any council members that wanna sit with me beforehand and we can go through it. Um, I'm fine with that and we can get the number down a little bit further. Um, but this is the number there, number that I'm comfortable presenting at this time.
Do you remember what we, what our preliminary was last year?
It, I, I think it was a little lower than this. I think it was more like.
I thought it was like fifty-one or fifty-two percent.
I think it was like fifty-two or fifty-three.
Fifty-two or fifty-three, but I can't, I mean, that'll give us a little reference on, on what, what preliminary to always ending up and kinda give us a reference, but.
Yeah, I.
Maybe just shoot that on email tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
And that fifty-some percent always goes up because the county's numbers aren't in there. That's just the city's percent.
Right. Right. All right, anything more on that that you need, Maggie?
Um, no, I think I'm okay.
Proclamation request.
Um, so this proclamation is being asked again of the city. It's the Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day proclamation. So we did pass, um, a proclamation that I included in your packet last year and they're requesting a similar or pretty similar proclamation this year. Um, I just wanted to bring this to you ahead of time. We don't currently have a proclamation policy, but I'm, I think I'm gonna recommend that we do one. Um, essentially those policies are just, um, outline kind of when we do get these requests, kinda what we do with them and, um, how to proceed. Otherwise, right now.
Well, and that's what we gotta check into because that was my question is, can we just make a proclamation that every year on the fif- you know, on the fifteenth, it is.
Right, we could, the only.
I, I assume they bring it up so it's visible and talked about again and that kinda thing. So I get that, but.
Right, I think it's more, yeah, to present it at a meeting, get recognition, but I think it's also, um, I think the only, the first thing that came to my mind was, like, if you, if this council passes it, does, does the next council necessarily, you know, um, support it? I don't know. Right?
Yeah.
Um.
I agree with some sort of policy. I guess we're seeing more of them now and.
Um, yeah, so I'll probably, I'll bring a policy to you. I just wanted to, I mean, since we passed it last year, I don't know what your thoughts are in passing it again.
I think we should. We did the research. It was a good thing. Nothing shady or hidden but in there and.
And is it, you know, and I, I get proclaiming a- a- and doing this, but if it's visibility, do they just want some time to come up and talk too?
Mm-hmm.
And, and do that. I mean, we can do that aspect of it to it. Uh, go, uh.
Invite them to come to the meeting.
Sign that way back in the eighties.
Eighty-eight.
And it's been there, so it's, it's out there. So if it's a matter of just some visibility, we can give them a few minutes of podium too.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, but otherwise, no, I'm comfortable either way. I'm certainly, uh, uh, um, am in favor of this, but.
Okay, I will work on that then. Um, last item.
Smart irrigation.
Yeah, so I received a request from a resident just to bring this to a workshop. Um, they couldn't be here tonight. Um, but I did, uh, say I would present it. Um, so they brought to my attention, I wasn't aware of this. Uh, other cities have a smart irrigation or have they, they've been working with the Metropolitan Council on a grant that, um, provides rebates to smart irrigation systems. What those, I don't know if you're aware of them. I had to research them. They kinda track the current weather. And then they, um, will turn on if it's like drier weather or, um, turn on during dry times. Um, if it's rainy, they won't turn on. So it, it promotes, uh, water efficiency and, um, doesn't waste, just doesn't waste water. Um, so I, I don't, I, I told them I would look into, um, or talk with you about applying to the Met Council to see if we would qualify or get funds for that. If we did, um, it would be a match rebate. So it would be essentially they, the Met Council pays seventy-five percent, we pay twenty-five. Um, we can get up to fifty thousand, um, uh, minimum two thousand. But, um, I just wanted to see if that's something we even wanted to consider. Um, it would allow, I mean, we could advertise it and see if residents would be willing to put in these systems. And I know one of our issues is we do get higher water bills in the summer, in the summertime because people aren't aware of how much water they're using. Um, so those first water bills tend to be quite a bit higher.
But most places do put these systems in. I mean, if you use Aqua Pro, Aqua Pro, they're all smart.
Okay.
So, I mean, so people like me and other people who've had these smart irrigation systems since we moved in or moved here.
Hmm.
Would, would current residents, having this currently, would that?
That is a good question.
It doesn't look like that it would qualify be.
I think it would be new.
To go to this kinda system.
Right.
It's like, well, we already have that system. That's what Aqua Pro does. And, you know, there's a couple others around Mare, but I think Aqua Pro is the, kinda the big one that we see around here.
Yeah, I think it's an incentive program to get people who don't have them currently to switch over.
My other questions are working with Met Council.
Hmm.
And.
Yeah.
What does that mean for us?
Um, we would have to do a reporting to them. Um, so there would be.
Always tried not to, for a good reason.
Yep, it's their.
Kinda saying, unless we start, unless we start getting a lot more inquiries about it, I think at this point.
Give them one foot in.
Just for being short-staffed and to try to get a program like this going for a resident or two or three, it.
Right.
I'm not saying that they're not important and we shouldn't do that, but we gotta weigh some of that too from being short-staffed, but.
Right, and I think, I think too, um, most of these would be a reimbursement of like a hundred fifty bucks. So, I mean, it's, it's significant, but it's, it's pretty.
And it's gotta get managed.
Exactly, so it's like the pros and cons of, so.
I'd be more interested in getting grants for people to get in, you know, the second meters.
Right.
You know, that seems to be a lot more important to people around here than, you know, because that's what can save them a lot of money.
Conservation, I mean, getting a second, I mean, people have, their water bills are cheaper, but that doesn't mean we're necessarily saving water.
No, but the water bills be cheaper.
Water conservation part of this and, and that's all good, but, um.
It's a lot of work for a couple people.
Manage this, uh, you know, with our staff. It's, it'd be tough at this time. That's my thoughts.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Where are we with, uh, Volmer Health Insurance?
Um, if you don't mind, I, well, I, I guess I, is this recorded? I don't.
You can give an update later. I mean, we.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
We can't discuss it right now, but certainly get an update.
I do have an update. I just don't.
Yeah, just never.
You've, okay, good. Okay, we are adjourned.